Hello, everybody. We're all just rejoining the call. Okay, and we are all here. Okay, so we are back. It's item 3.1, reconvene, called order reconvene, open session. Open session is reconvened at 5:45 PM. 3.2, deportive action taken in closed session. The governing board met in closed session and no action was taken. 3.3 is a pledge of allegiance. Holly, will you please lead us in our remote pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3.4 is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, number wooden.
Aye.
Number Raffner?
Aye.
Number Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Number Mock?
Aye.
Aye for me. Motion to approve the agenda has passed. 4.1 is correspondence. Dr. McClurg.
Good evening. The superintendent's office has received the following correspondence throughout the previous month. Several regarding the great job and thank you for the job the district is doing, guiding schools through the pandemic and keeping schools open. Several regarding DMUSD in-person school after the holiday break. One regarding children returning to their home school in the 2021-22 school year. One thanking the district for the hard work being put into the Delmar Heights rebuild and the challenges with that. Several regarding the districts addressing the events at the US Capitol and addressing diversity in the district. One regarding teachers during, or excuse me, the instructional program during the pandemic. A couple regarding COVID-19 testing and vaccinations. And that concludes the correspondence for the previous month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are item 4.2, hearing with the public regarding non-agenda items. We will now call members of the public who have requested to address the governing board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to address the board regarding an item on the agenda must complete and submit the online request to provide input form available on the front page of the agenda. And then this item, 4.2, as well as 5.7, to be heard on an item on the agenda. Once you have submitted the form, please click on the raise hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen or of calling. And I'll start trying to raise your hand so moderator can find you. Please only click raise hand after you have completed the request form. If you're unable to access it, please email Megan Bennett, m-bennett@dmusd.org, two N's, two Ts. Okay. Going to call, we have two speakers, Samuel Arias and James Peters. So can we bring them both in the call? And we'll take Samuel first. All right, Samuel, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Samuel. I am a 10-year-old student. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today. I believe I have a responsibility to denounce injustice and express concerns on how districts are taking children mediation and due process. You will keep reviewing OAH cases in closed sessions. I ask you to please avoid taking a child and their family mediation or due process. I have a terrible experience myself. It is terrible to see my parents worry and have to speak legal help to defend their child. I can guarantee that none of you the special education child that you had to fight for. And that is why you allow your district to litigate. I urge you to please educate yourself on special education. Please do your homework. It is least expensive to give services and education and to file against a family. Please consider the burden that you put through a family when schools and districts file against children. I have heard of school districts taking on a fight with a family over assets that cost between a few hundred dollars. This is sickening the stomach. Agenda item 6.4. There is a purchase order for $37,000 for a legal firm in the board packet. It is not clear, but it appears it could be for special education matters since DMUSD uses FFF for special education matters. I urge to always ensure state funds are always used for education, not litigation. Agenda 6.11. It appears that DMUSD is making significant significant changes in board policy 6164.6. Since this change would affect children like me who receive special education, I felt it was important to comment on this item. There was one section regarding felicity? That's what completely removed, not replaced. I will read it. I'll read it for you. Students with disabilities still have facilities of a type of quality equivalent to those of students without disabilities.
Thank you. You have 15 seconds to conclude.
It is concerning that this was removed. What could almost imply that DMUSD does not now need to provide facilities of a type and quality equal to those of non-disabled students. I hope that is not the case. Please follow me on Facebook, at YouTube, movement, every student's successful. More education, less litigation, special education, children matter. Thank you very much for your time and attention, Samuel Arias. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Samuel. Jim Peters? You're muted, but you're on the call. Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is James D. Peters III. I'm the executive director of the Special Education Law Division, the law offices of Shield &amp; Bane. Our firm is the firm that sued the governor and the 977 school districts in California regarding COVID-19 and the actions that were taken. It was interesting as we worked with the attorney general and we worked with the governor, they quickly came to us and informed us that they were basically in agreement. Because, and I quote, "The governor said, 'None of the executive orders or public health directors issued in California in response to COVID-19 pandemic reported to waive the IDEA, which entitles eligible children with disabilities to special education and related services through an IEP.' The governor said, Jim, you know, we're not going to fight you. Other districts are in the Ninth Circuit now as we take this court case forward. It's interesting because the governor went on to say, and then I quote, "The state of California expects and state law requires that schools implementing distance learning are delivered services required under IEP." Now, you know, we deal with a lot of school district cases and often the superintendents will say, you know, Jim, I wish I really knew what was going on at the time. But I think you must know because CBS, NBC, newspapers, and parents everywhere. And since the governor has entered into this settlement agreement with us where he is coming forward and speaking directly about this, we're getting 25 calls a day of parents who want to sue the school district, including North School District. The governor also said, and this is a quote, "Senate Bill 98, which was enacted in conjunction with the Budget Act of 2020, includes requirements for schools that provide distance learning as a result of being closed for in-person instruction during the 2020-21 school year. The legislation expressly provides that distance learning must include provision of special education-related services and any other services required by a student's IEP. And that the schools must determine what accommodations are necessary to ensure that required IEP services can be delivered in a distance learning environment." So what I'm basically telling you is the governor has come to us in each state. It makes a difference, not just in this state now, it's all over the country. As senators and congressional members have been communicating with us. It is in violation of the law.
Thank you. You have 15 seconds to conclude.
Where the districts eliminated service for the kids. We know that case 2020120692 because we represent the students. We know that this district can step up and do the right thing. Or I'm sure we'll go to court and get a determination. Thank you and have a lovely evening. Good night.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to item 5.1, board recognition, DMUSD employees of the month.
Join me in congratulating these following DMUSD employees of the month for the month of January. Andrew Burke, sixth grade Spanish teacher, Ashley Falls School. Carmel Del Mar, Wendy Wacowsky, first grade teacher. Delmar Heights School, Katie Mook, education specialist. Delmar Hills Academy, Michael Massa, sixth grade teacher. Ocean Air School, Haley Cantner, fourth grade teacher. Sage Canyon School, Wendy Correa, kindergarten teacher. Sycamore Ridge School, Katie Moynier, STEAM Plus Physical Education teacher. Torrey Hills School, Stephanie Cluckston, kindergarten launch teacher. And from the district office, Ed Cruz, maintenance worker. As we know, our teachers are doing an incredible job and all of our employees right now. And this just, this is the stars among stars in our district. A huge congratulations to all of these employees and a big thank you, I know, from all of us. Congratulations to the January 2021 employees of the month. Great job, everybody.
Congratulations and thank you. Item 5.2 is the DMCTA report. And we welcome Kevin Kuniya, president.
There we go.
Yeah.
Sorry. President Halpern and Dr. McClurg, members of the board and cabinet. Good evening and thank you for having me. Here we are, off and running in 2021. DMCTA has definitely been hard at work trying to identify areas of concern as we move into this new year for our teachers and our students and work together with our district to find resolutions that work for both. And I think the key in what we're doing and what's working comes in that last part, which is working together to find resolutions that work for both. Sad to say, I've been seeing a lot in the media lately of districts and unions just in deadlock opposition to each other. And I know there's a lot of factors that go into that, a lot of reasons why. And there's always two sides to the story. But often what I see time and time again is two parties directly opposed to each other with either side wanting to give or one or two sides not wanting to give. So it's been a pleasure to have a DMCTA executive board who shares the same ideas I do, which is you don't get something for nothing and you have to give a little to get a little. And it works best to work with those who you want to seek resolutions with. And also, I'm pretty happy that our district has seen it the same way. And as we've gone through the school year, we found ways to work out resolutions to things that work, even though it's not always something everybody's happy about. But everybody's realizing, especially in this time, that again, sometimes you have to give a little to get a little. And what's most important is that we're doing what's best for our students. So most recently, what we have worked on is notably the HR 6201, which was the relief bill for teachers, or not teachers, but employees getting sick days or leave for COVID-related reasons. And that expired in December 31st. So as of January 1st, there was no relief there for teachers if they had to be quarantined, whether it was their child who was sick or if they themselves were exposed and had to take time off. So we've been able to work together and come up to a resolution that basically works out, I think, even better than what the original bill was. And that took a little effort on both sides. So I'm very appreciative of that. Right now, the biggest thing I think I'm seeing from teachers, and I've been communicating with this district a lot on, is the idea of how are we going to get teachers their vaccines? So there's a lot of factors out of our hands right now. But there are some things possibly we can be doing to smooth the process, hopefully. And that's what we're working towards right now. And it's kind of an ongoing conversation as we see how things unfold with the state, with the county, and so forth. So that's all I have for tonight. I do thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. We really appreciate that. And thank you for representing the teachers and staff. We'll take 5.3, board report for Phoebe Castle, president of the Delmar Schools Education Foundation. Oh, Phoebe, I like your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, President Halpern and members of the board and Dr. McClurg. It's great to see you all. Happy New Year. We're finally in 2021, right? And we're really excited at DMSCF, you know, to be in a new year and to be, to be starting off with such incredible, you know, community support and support from the district and incredible teachers. So we just wanted to kind of, you know, start the year with going through some of these incredible benefits of STEAM Plus. And I know we, I know we all know some of them, but it's really nice to be reminded of why these programs are so valuable and especially in times like this. So we just pulled together some things that, you know, you can definitely find in different, you know, all over the place. There's so much research out there on the value of STEAM Plus. But you can see here that STEAM Plus programs teach our students confidence and creativity, collaboration, resilience, innovation, leadership skills. And even more than that, they have been proven to increase test scores at every grade level, increase classroom engagement. This is one that I find really fascinating. They've done studies and they found that students in classrooms, the level of disruptions goes down by about 20% on average for students that do have access to STEAM learning. And they're just, it's because they get to practice being engaged and they're excited to go to those classes. And they, you know, they have these other types of things to look forward to. So that's really, really exciting. And then STEAM Plus programs, you know, encourage our students to continue to look for STEAM. So in high school and college and in their careers, you know, and that's so important for our students as they, as they continue to get, to get older. And it increases SAT scores and it encourages students to communicate and work together. And obviously, that is, it's very important, you know, especially in this day and age. And communication is one of the skills that matters most, right? As we go forward and as we work together. So next, well, let's see. We can wait on the next slide. Oh, we can start. Thanks, Chris. First, I just wanted also, you know, based on this, we're just really grateful to our community. We know that our community supports STEAM Plus. And we wanted to just let everybody know that what we've raised so far. And we've already raised about 30% of our goal for the year, which is fantastic news. And we have, we've raised $350,000 from our families. And we've also raised over $70,000 from corporate matching, which is fantastic. And just shows the value of our families submitting those matches and of these companies, you know, that do support nonprofits like DMSCF. So we're thrilled about that. We're so grateful. And, you know, we're getting, we're getting into the spring, which is traditionally our Jogathon season. And obviously, DMSCF and, you know, PTAs that we've talked to and everyone in the district, we've been trying to figure out a way that we can still go forward. And, you know, the big news is, so we can go to the next slide, that is that Jogathon is on. Jogathon is not canceled. We're really excited. We've been working really closely with Dr. McClurg and the rest of the, you know, the district and the principals and to come up with just hopefully what's going to be a really fun, but very COVID-safe event that will be for all students. So in-person and launch, we'll have the, you know, the same exact experiences and we'll be able to really enjoy Jogathon and enjoy, you know, getting out there and being active. So we have, we'll have a lot more information coming for the February meeting, but we did want to share that it's on and we're really excited. It will start taking place in March and, you know, it will be, it will be a great event. And there will be, you know, lots of, lots of the same things that we've been able to do, but just in a slightly different format. And it should be great for all of our students and families. So thanks for having us.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to that Jogathon. Haven't missed a year yet. So I look forward to participating in this one and seeing what it looks like. Should be different. Okay, now we are item 5.4, board report from the, from the Delmar Parent Teacher Association. We welcome Sage Canyon School PTA President Amy Berkeley to provide a report on keeping the volunteer spirit going. So we'll bring her into the call. I see you in the lineup there, Amy. Just hang tight while we get you into the call. Okay, looks like you're in. Just muted.
Okay, thank you. I did have some slides as well.
There you go. Yeah.
Not much. Okay. Um, can you get it? Perfect. Well, thank you. On behalf, I'm happy to present on volunteer spirit on behalf of the, let me turn my video on. On behalf of, for some reason, I can't turn my video. So just bear with me. On behalf of the elder PTA presidents, PTA mission is to positively impact the lives of our kids and families at our school. And what this year's focus is really keeping our school community strong, keeping us connected and supported whether we're in launch or in person. And we can't do this without volunteers. So next slide, please. So PTA is a volunteer-based organization. It's a group of parents, volunteers, parents just like you who work together to support our schools. And why is volunteering so important? Well, the PTA cannot run without volunteers. PTA sponsored events don't happen without volunteers. And many school clubs and programs are led by volunteers. So it's really volunteers are who makes our schools in our district so special and enriching. Next slide, please. So, and of course, challenges this past year. Of course, there's challenges. We've had challenges finding volunteers. Everyone is busy. Everyone has unique challenges. And there's been fewer opportunities for natural conversations at schools to see who may be interested in helping or for us asking for help. And quite frankly, Zoom calls are hard to find volunteers. So especially this year, we need creative ideas and input from different perspectives and experiences, and those all come from volunteers. Next slide, please. So what are some volunteering opportunities? Well, first of all, you don't have to make PTA a full-time job to make a difference. Volunteering can be as much or as little as you choose. It could be a PTA board. It could be participating in school events like drive-by ice cream socials, community outreach such as food drives, or helping with teacher appreciation week at school. There's all schools' school programs like Math Club and Science Olympiad. And in the classroom, it's so important to have room parents. And you can volunteer anytime for whatever interests you and however much or little time you have. It could be coordinating or leading events. It could just be helping at an event or working behind the scenes to ordering supplies or preparing for events or running errands or writing thank you notes. Next slide, please. So some of the many benefits of volunteering, studies show that children do better in school when their parents volunteer. And it's a really good opportunity to participate in your child's activities. And your child can actually work with you on these volunteering activities as well. And probably one of the most beneficial things about volunteering and being part of the PTA is you get to meet other families and friends in your community. These are probably people you don't, wouldn't normally be in your social circle, maybe in different grades. But you really build these lasting bonds within your community. You get to know your school staff, your principals, the board sometimes. And it's fun and rewarding to see children having fun and learning. And especially this day and age, just to see big smiles on their faces. So next slide. So how to volunteer? This is my last slide. It's not just moms and dads like us who can volunteer. It's anyone who can, who supports children at our schools. Grandparents, uncles, aunts, caregivers, girl scouts, Eagle Scouts. We've even had at Sage Canyon, we had the female athletic volunteers, the Fab Girls at Torrey Pines High School volunteer for a few events. And it's been amazing. So how do you volunteer? You can email your PTA and the addresses are here. You can just ask around, ask the front office or your principal and join your next PTA General Assembly meeting to hear about upcoming plans and opportunities and find something that might interest you. And please ask us at our next PTA event. We're always looking to meet new people, find volunteers. And it's just really exciting and rewarding. So until we see you at our next event, I wish you a good night and stay safe.
Thank you, Amy. We appreciate you and all of the volunteers. And thanks for all of your efforts in this most difficult of years to volunteer. Thanks so much. We are item 5.5, board report for governing board members. And I think we'll follow our same order, which is to invite member wooden first to speak.
I have nothing to report for this month.
Okay. Number Raffner?
Well, we made it to January and I, every time I listen on the radio, I hear all the school districts around the country talking about not opening up, not opening up, not opening up and the difficulties that they're having in doing so. And it just reminds me of how special our district is. And I heard it today. I'm not quite sure where I heard it from, but that we are one of the few school districts in our state that are open and are working well with our teachers and community in doing so. And just another commendation to everyone involved that allowed that or made that happen. From the teachers, the administration, to the parents, to the children. Kudos to, you know, hooray for us for getting the kids back into school because it's so important. And I look forward to a year of health for everybody. And it looks like we're on that road towards that. So keep my fingers crossed and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Number Fitzpatrick?
Hi, everyone. Good evening and Happy New Year. I feel like everyone's saying Happy New Year. And I'm like, wow, like we're halfway through the year already. But it is still only in January. But yeah, I think for me, I was able to attend Zoom Board Book Club. And again, it's always great to connect with other board members from across, you know, our feeder districts and also through San Agito and was able to meet the new board member there. And that's exciting because, you know, I think that great things are going to happen in that district. And it looks like they have a lot on their plate, but yeah. And sorry. What else do I want to say? That's it for me. I think that I just am hopeful that the teachers get their vaccines ASAP and good health to everyone. So thank you.
Thank you. Number Mock?
Hi, everyone. Yeah, same thing echoing what you guys have said. Yeah, looking forward to.
Yeah, looking forward to better days and no vaccines looking promising. So the, the couple of things that I attended were, last we attended the Equity Conference at the San Diego County Office of Education. It was a virtual thing, kind of like what we had done before with the annual conference we attend, annual education conference. And then I also attended two, two trainings for No Place for Hate for parents, for family members. And I also saw many staff members there too, which was great too. They had principals that sat down. I believe they probably had their own training before, but they jumped in on ours just to kind of get more information and, and it was fantastic. I, I would really encourage everybody here, everybody out there in the world that's out in the community to, to attend the No Place for Hate trainings if they come up again. This for next year, definitely please attend these things for us, you guys. I think that they're really important. There's so much talk about them, but one thing, one piece I want to kind of just kind of share with you guys about was kind of talking about like their identity and how we kind of see ourselves and how we teach that. You know, something that we learn at a very young age and, and as we're, obviously the school has a lot to do with that. You know, particularly for those that come from a history of discrimination and oppression. I, I think that we have to teach so much more that they're, that they're just victims. And that's kind of how they're exposed to it the first time. You know, we're always talking about like how they're being oppressed, how they're, and that's how they see themselves. And that's how people, the students will, affects their perception, affects their self-esteem. And I think that there's so many more positive contributions that, that these different groups have made in society. I mean, they're literally, you know, astronauts, scientists, activists, anything that you can think of. You know, there are positive contributions that, that people have made. And, and I think that it is, would be wonderful if, you know, the focus was there. And, you know, so our, our students should learn about these contributions. And I think that teachers, it would be great if they had the resources to be able to incorporate this into their learning materials. And so that's kind of one, one of the main pieces that I wanted to share. But yeah, it's, it's, I, I think as a school district, we have a responsibility to the community to help educate our kids to, to, you know, be kids that are going to contribute to society and, and a fair and just society. So I think that's really important. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. I will add that I also attended the School Board Book Club, the region, it's the San Diego District and the feeder, feeder districts. And even though it's called a book club, it's been a really nice forum for us to share and learn from each other across the same area. So we, whenever we have, one of us can't attend, we will definitely invite another board member to sit in. So we have no more than two participating, but definitely worthwhile. And I also want to second what Doug said and thank the teachers and our union for, and the district for walk, working cooperatively together to, to get to good solutions. It's really a beacon of light in this time to, to see such a great relationship and good results that are coming out of it. So thanks to everybody involved with that. Okay, we're going to move on to item five point six, which is the superintendent's report.
Good evening again. It had, there's been so much going on and it is exciting to be able to talk to it from a, from a kind of a firsthand experience with being able to actually see children in school. And obviously we've got children virtually participating in school as well. And so a huge thank you to our DMSCF and our PTA presidents for continuing to meet with me and others regularly and, and do the great work that they're doing. That's been wonderful. I also attended the national conference hosted by the San Diego County Office of Education on diversity, equity, and inclusion was outstanding. In addition to several other conferences and opportunities to be a part of conversations around this very important topic and priority in our district. So that's been great as well. And also continue to attend weekly meetings with all of the superintendents in the county. So we are kept up to date as to our county office of education. In addition to our Health and Human Services Agency with information in real time that then obviously can be brought back to our school districts here and make sure that we are continuing to keep up with all of the important information as it relates to our school site. I want to say a huge thank you to Jenny Ha, our Director of Student Services, for helping to organize a webinar with the wonderful Dr. Thea Lolepovin. He is fantastic. He presented a webinar for our teachers on the vaccine. And actually our webinar, the webinar is available on our website if you're interested. It's about a 15, 20-minute webinar. He is very well-versed. He is a medical consultant working with HHSA. And a huge thank you to, to, to the doctor for helping us with that webinar and to distribute important and timely information to our staff as well. So we're working on that. And I too want to thank DMCTA, along with the entire executive board for DMCTA, because a lot of people don't really get to see what's happening, you know, behind the scenes with that executive board and the teachers' union and that, how they really do advocate for their membership and for teachers and what they need so that we can then be responsive and make sure that our district is a place where, you know, the well-being and health of everyone is always considered and that we are working together to do, obviously, ultimately what's best for children. And I just cannot thank them enough. Every teacher in this district and every staff member in this district for continuing to care so much and for continuing to do so much that is so right for children. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda, item six point one through six point one nine. We do speakers. We have four speakers on item six point four, which is the purchase orders. So let's bring in Rita Luth, followed by Jessica Martinez. Okay, Rita, you're in the call. There you go.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Delmar Board Members and members of the public. I wanted to speak on the purchase orders number one, two, three, one, two, for the law firm of Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost. I wanted to share my experience with that law firm and make you aware of their tactics and how they act towards parents and families of children with special needs, like my family. You may want to check out the FFF contract, which on section seven of that standard contract has a clause that allows them to hire private investigators to conduct what amounts to government-funded surveillance on families. They have also filed motions in my case over eight dollars and forty cents. They have filed motions over fifty-one dollars and forty-one cents, forty-five cents, excuse me. And the last one was found to be meritless by the court and was thrown out. But these are the tactics that you should be aware of. The law firm of Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost is one of the legal firms that represents Delmar. They are literally profiting from the pain they're inflicting on families who are already vulnerable. While kids and families suffer, some of the FFF attorneys go to vacation in Cuba. As you may know, Cuba has been designated as a state sponsor of terror. The State Department designated Cuba as a sponsor of terror because the country continues to harbor American fugitives, included, including a convicted killer of a New Jersey state trooper among the many human rights abuses against the Cuban people. I was born in Cuba and I have been a proud American citizen for many years. It is disturbing to see American tax dollars going to a corporation that has employees who vacation it in a terrorist state against our government's directives. The lawyers for Delmar are contractors for a public agency and thus should follow the law. Please investigate why your contractors are taking actions that go against public policy. I found out about this issue because there was a picture on social media and the caption read, Taxi Cuban Style, Hoops, Hoops, and More Hoops, We Have Finally Arrived. This indicates to me that the hoops being referred to sound like circumvention of the United States travel policies. I urge you to look into these unethical practices by the attorneys employed by the Delmar School District. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And before we take our next speaker, I want to circle back because I forgot to, item five point seven, to remind everybody that we, that is our last call for public input on speaker requests regarding Anna's on the agenda. So we are closing the public input link. We already have a number of people signed up, so I think people have found it. And then I also wanted to do five point eight, which is the board approval of the meeting minutes. So let's just, we'll just move that to right after the consent agenda so we can continue with this consent agenda item. But I did want to get to item five point seven with a reminder to sign up if you wish to speak on anything on the agenda. Okay, so let's go ahead and continue with the comments on the consent agenda. And then we'll come back to five point eight. So next we have Jessica Martinez, followed by Dolores Lopez. Still on item six point four. Okay, Jessica, you're in the call. Go ahead.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, board. My name's Jessica Martinez and I wanted to address the board tonight regarding agenda item six point four, the purchase orders in regards to Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost. The purchase order number is one, two, three, one, two, which is for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and three, and nine thousand, three hundred and ninety. I wanted to share my experience tonight with this particular law firm. This, this law firm sued my family, both my children, within a forty hour, forty-eight hour period in two thousand nineteen. In twenty twenty, I was in due process, four weeks, two for each one of my children. In March, during the pandemic, during the shutdown, this law firm also filed against my family in order to deny assessments for my children. And currently, we're in federal court where the law firm, Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost, filed in order to remove my guardianship for my children. And we recently got the, the judge disagreed with the law firm and they granted my ability to represent my children. But these are just tactics and, in my opinion, a way of wasting our taxpayers' dollars with motions that do not make any sense. So I would really urge this board to look into the doings of FFF and also not just, you know, agree to these purchase orders without knowing why this amount of money is being paid to them. And so I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Dolores Lopez, followed by Mary Ann Grossner. So we can bring them both into the call. Okay, Dolores, you're in the call. Go ahead.
Good evening, board members. There are two entries for the law firm FFF on page two of your PO report. PO number one, two, three, one, two, is for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and three, and nine thousand, three hundred and ninety. DMUSD typically uses FFF for special education matters. So I wonder if the board, Ms. Burke, can clarify if either of these entities are for special education matters? And speaking of FFF, I've been made aware of something concerning. There's another school district who contracted FFF for special education matters and recently FFF tried to take away guardianship from a parent on an existing due process case. These kind of tactics seem questionable. It seems the judge didn't agree with FFF. And as the parent just won her motion to be her son's guardian for the lawsuit concerning her son, it seems mind-blowing that the legal team can say that is a concept of interest to represent your own child in a legal case. And it makes, makes you find something else to be a legal guardian for your child. Imagine if you have kids and this would happen to you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And we have Mary Ann Grossner. She coming in? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to make a comment regarding the purchase order list. Among all the POs there, there's a vendor listed, Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost. This is a law firm that is used extensively by school districts for special education matters. And the public is interested to know if the thirty-seven thousand or approximate and the nine thousand PO entries, if they were used for special education matters. FFF has greatly profited from denying services to disabled children, as you've probably already heard. In many school districts, there is no max amount listed on the contracts that are signed with school districts. And I couldn't locate a max amount on the DMUSD's board tactics either. So this is effectively a blank check to FFF so they can continue to use our tax dollars against children with disabilities. FFF lists in their contracts also that they may do surveillance and they definitely do. I'm aware of a family that FFF hired to do surveillance on and they took that family to court to get the family to pay for it. They even engaged in legal action to try and get eight dollars and forty cents in interest from that family, while three attorneys at rates of up to two hundred and ninety dollars per hour were used to file the motion. FFF has also been known to protract litigation. Recently, one due process case FFF was involved in was slated to be three days and ended up being twenty days. There are better ways to spend our taxpayer dollars. Please look into how law firms such as Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost are spending our taxpayer dollars. Our children need more education and less litigation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of public comment on six point four. We still have the same two last speakers on item six point one, one. But are there any board member questions or comments on this item, knowing that we cannot discuss any particular case? Okay, then I'll call back Mary Ann Grossner and Dolores Lopez. Actually, we'll have Dolores Lopez first, followed by Mary Ann Grossner on item six point one, one. Okay, Dolores, go ahead. But you're muted. Dolores, you're in the call, but muted. While we're waiting for Dolores to unmute, could we bring Mary Ann Grossner also into the call? All right, Mary Ann, why don't you go ahead? Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm asking the board to please vote no on this policy for the board policy change. There are significant changes to this board policy. And the most concerning thing is the removal referencing that, quote, "Students with disability shall have facilities of a type and quality equivalent to those of students without disabilities," end quote. Why is this being removed? Does this mean that DMUSD does not have to provide equal access to facilities as the American Disabilities Act requires? Please consider rewriting this board policy to include specific language to address disability access as it was previously written. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dolores, do you still want to speak? Okay, she's now unmuted. So, oh, there you go. Are you going to speak?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to request that the board, I'm sorry, I would like to- Uh, I would like to request that the board, uh, I'm sorry, I would like to request that the board table this item. It appears that the DMUSD is making significant changes to this board policy six, one, six, four point six. Where did the district get the new language for this board policy? Was this provided to them by the C S B A or did the legal department rewrite this? Who did Nadine shake work to have this policy rewritten? Also, you are removing the following sentences. Students with disabilities shall have facilities of a type and quality equivalent to those of students without disabilities. Is this concerning that this section is being completely removed and not replaced? It almost implies that D M U S D doesn't need to make any facilities accessible to students with a disability by their, by this omission? Is the district trying to circumvent ADA? There are many families in the D M U S D specialist community that are very concerned about this significant language change. And we would also appreciate it when we're talking, Mr. Dogg and Mr. Wayne stop laughing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. McClurg, do you want, do you or any of the staff want to, um, explain board, this board policy that is being referenced?
Sure. Um, can we bring in Jenny Ha, our Director of Student Services? She could provide some information. Hi, yes, the speaker asked if, um, this recommended language came from the gamut, from, um, the California School Board Association and it actually has. That was not, um, a language that we changed with our own legal team. It was a state, it is state adopted language for that policy.
Okay, now we are still providing, um, equivalent facilities for students with special needs?
Of course. That is through the Americans with Disabilities Act. That is actually law, federal law.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Um, while we have Jenny, does anybody else have questions on this item?
Yeah, Jenny, did the state give any rationale as to why they made these changes or recommending these changes?
Typically, when that, when the changes to the language are made, it is because it's, um, it's duplicate language that we have in an, in another policy or it is redundant with federal or state law.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Are there any other questions or comments on items on the consent agenda?
Just can I ask or point out that, like, I'm assuming that federal law trumps our board policy? Uh, and that's kind of what we would abide by, correct, Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good clarification. Okay, so, um, seeing as there are no more questions on the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item six point one through six point one, nine?
I'll move to approve the, uh, consent agenda.
Hey, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion to approve the consent agenda has passed. We're gonna drop back to item five point eight, Board of Approval Governing Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote. Member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion to approve the minutes has passed. Seven point one, Board Report World Language Program Update with Shelley Peterson, Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services. Welcome.
Good evening, Board President, helper and members of the board and Dr. McClurg. Um, I will wait till our presentation comes up, but in the interim, we have several presenters this evening, myself, as well as Sarah Raskin, uh, Coordinator of Curriculum and Instruction, Andrew Burke, one of our employees of the month, uh, sixth grade Spanish teacher, and as well as Vicky Anderson, one of our Spanish language immersion teachers. Uh, so we all have a part in sharing the wonderful work of our world language program, which incorporates or encompasses rather both our Spanish language immersion program and our sixth grade, um, Spanish. So, next slide, please. All right, we had a board report in October, so this is just a refresher. We have in our Spanish language immersion program, we have three classes at two school sites, Ashley Falls and Delmar Hills Academy. And we are expanding to first grade, uh, with that program at both of those schools for the twenty one, twenty two school year. And you'll hear more about that toward the end of our presentation. We also have our foreign language for elementary students, which is referred to as FLESS. That is our sixth grade program and we work with our sixth grade students. We have four teachers providing Spanish instruction both in launch and in person. And that is, uh, twice per week for every sixth grade student within our district. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and pass it on to Sarah to update us on her part. Next slide, please.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you again this evening and tonight to talk about the World Language Advisory Committee. Uh, we have and we're very fortunate to have a wonderful group of teachers, parents, principals, and members of the instructional services team participating on the committee. And really, the goal of this committee is to provide ongoing guidance and feedback on the development of our program. This year, our priority actions include developing the scope and the sequence of instruction for Spanish immersion program at the kindergarten and first grade levels, as well as for our sixth grade, uh, Spanish program. Part of that work also includes identifying the assessments and the tools that our teachers will need to be able to gauge student progress and overall program effectiveness. Shortly, we're going to hear, as Shelley said, from some of our outstanding, more about some of our outstanding programs from some of our teachers. Um, but additionally, some of our, our ongoing work in the committee also includes updating our staff and our community about our program. After we meet as a committee, we always have that opportunity to touch base and share out the great work that's occurring. And also to provide program outreach and we'll learn more about that this evening as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Andrew Burke, um, one of our sixth grade Spanish teachers. Thank you, Andrew, and next slide, please.
All right. Hello, everyone, and thank you, Sarah. It's a pleasure joining the board today. Um, honestly, the past few months have been so much fun and I'm incredibly proud of all the learning and growth that the sixth grade students have accomplished this year. Um, I'm very excited to share the following slides and some of the highlights of the students' learning, um, from, from this year so far. So, next slide, please. Um, so as you can see, within the FLESS program, our instruction is underpinned by three objectives that are aligned with the world language standards. Uh, each of these objectives are met through activities that address cultures, connections and communication. Um, through engaging with authentic materials like music, TV commercials, uh, YouTube tutorials, all in Spanish. All of the students, um, explore the cultural diversity of Latin America and Spain. Um, and we consider different perspectives beyond the perspective here in the U.S. and all of our cultures um, as we learn new language forms and functions. But Spanish class is not just learning about the language, but really using it um, and developing an understanding of how to use the language to communicate confidently with real people and in real situations. Uh, we learn to talk about, um, our friends and families, what we're interested in. Uh, we design trips abroad, um, and then we look at solutions for challenges to problems that we see, um, here in our communities and around the world. So with that in mind, I'd like to share a few examples, please. So, next slide. So, to promote, uh, cultural awareness in the first trimester, students created country reports, um, and directed their own learning by creating travel plans to various Spanish speaking countries. Through a variety of mediums like skits, i-movies, um, and slideshows, students created day-to-day itineraries to a Spanish speaking country of their choice. And they designed trips, um, to explore foods, restaurants they would like to visit. They looked at menus in Spanish. Um, they bought, um, plane tickets to these destinations. Um, and then they shared their learning and discoveries with one another. So if, as you can see in these, uh, pictures here, the students really, their creativity and their thinking steered their classes and they taught one another to recognize and appreciate all of the different cultures and the diversity across the Spanish speaking world. Next slide, please. Uh, one of my favorite, um, activities and units that we accomplished, that we engaged in this, um, this year so far, has been living on a dollar a day. Um, it was a documentary film, um, featuring four college students that traveled to Guatemala to really understand and develop, um, empathy with what it's like living on less than a dollar a day. Um, so we used Google Jamboard, which was a fantastic solution to kind of overcome some of the challenges we're facing with in-person and online instruction. Um, and students were able to, um, describe what a good and bad day looks like for themselves here in the U.S. versus what a good or bad day might look like in Guatemala. Um, and honestly, I was incredibly humbled and impressed by their sense of, you know, identifying with, with what someone might be going through, putting on their shoes for a second, but then using that empathy to do something. They really wanted to, um, take action. You know, and as a teacher, that was so inspiring to see. Um, so these students are using Spanish, as you can see here, um, in ways that applies to the real world. Um, and they want to do something, um, to address things that they have issue with, and I was really proud of that. So, next slide, please. So I'd like to share two final examples to demonstrate some of the connections that students are building because of Spanish. Um, we recently started reading a chapter book called El Capitular Conbotas that builds a student's confidence, um, in Spanish through using critical thinking and inference skills. And then students are able to negotiate some of the meaning, um, from the text and then connect it to themes that they're exploring in other classes. Um, something that really stuck out to me was at Carmel Del Mar, a student had made a comment as we were reading the book that Spanish, that Spanish was backwards, um, because of the placement of adjectives and nouns. Um, but then another student chimed in and said, oh, well, maybe English is backwards, which I thought was a really sophisticated insight and it prompted a really cool discussion with all of the students about different perspectives, um, and our place in the world. So that was really, um, really neat. And then finally, and completely thanks to Vicky Anderson and Blanca Stingle, uh, the sixth grade students at Ashley Falls and Delmar Hills Academy, um, collaborated with the SLIP students, um, in kindergarten to create an ofrenda, uh, or offering for Dia de los Muertos. And then as the students saw the impact of the, their learning on the school community, and I'm not sure if you can see, uh, here in the, the photo, but that pillar on the left, and this was Vicky's, um, idea, but it had little sempasuchiles, sort of flowers, that, um, staff members or really anyone in the school community could write the name of someone who had passed who's important to them. Um, so this tradition, this holiday, um, that we could have engaged with on a very superficial level, um, became a lot more. And it became a lot more than just the Spanish classes and then the SLIP classes. Um, so that was a really, um, proud moment for us. And then a really cool thing as well, lastly, um, the students in seeing the SLIP, um, kindergarten students receiving all of their instruction in Spanish, their minds were blown. Um, and really were intrigued by like everything in Spanish. And one of them remarked like, oh, I wish I had done that, which made me, again, um, really happy just to see that appreciation for learning another language. Um, so to conclude, I'm very proud and happy to be a part of the FLESS program. Um, we're engaging in very important conversations and students are reconsidering their worldviews, becoming more culturally sensitive, inclusive. And I see that eagerness to explore the world in their eyes and I'm so, so excited, um, to see how the program grows and develops. So with that, thank you very much, and I'll hand it over to Vicky Anderson with the SLIP program. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, and congratulations again. Well deserved. Um, good evening. My name is Vicky Anderson. I am the kindergarten Spanish language immersion teacher at Ashley Falls. And thank you for the opportunity to allow us to share about the inaugural year of this program with some of our experiences so far. Next slide, please. So, oh, sorry, next slide. I apologize. Um, here we have an overview of some of the key skills that students learn in the first trimester. And as you can see, it looks very much the same as what you might find or envision what is happening in all kindergarten around Delmar Union. But the only difference is this is all happening in Spanish, as Andrew mentioned. In the language arts, we build right from the start, building with letter recognition, sound recognition, writing these letters, reading them, and then that turns into words, which turns into sentences and even stories in their second language. Then in math, we also follow the district's cognitively guided instruction. The students right away start counting by ones and by tens to a hundred. They start solving problems and explaining their thinking and their reasoning. And, um, they start uncovering these amazing mathematical ideas during our number talks. We try to frame everything kind of within a science or a social studies theme because we want the kids to have something rich to talk about. They really, you know, it's not just colors, numbers. It's let's really talk about living things. Let's talk about Native Americans, tribes or groups that we, we can learn about. Um, we want them to be able to talk, read and write about rich topics. Next slide, please. So here you have some of our young linguists at work. This is a small sample of some of the language strategies that we use so that students can start building that confidence that their language, with their language skills and still access the contents that we are teaching in kindergarten. So as I mentioned, there are rich themes so that we build the vocabulary that way. And we use a lot of pictures. We use a lot of real objects that they can get their hands on, so they can understand what we're talking about. We use gestures. We use the tone of our voice, questioning and using, you know, exclamatory sounds so that they realize that that tone also indicates something in the meaning of the words they're learning. Um, the first picture here, you see some students working on sentence syntax with vocabulary that we built in a science unit on living things. So they're manipulating language, but they're using that content that we've learned at the same time. And the middle, the middle picture there has a lot going on. It looks so simple, but there's a lot going on there in terms of language. We have, um, all these strategies where we have students paying close attention to cognits, context clues, patterns. You see, there's a picture of a magician there. I don't know if you can see it very well. And there's repetitive text at the bottom. And some students may be familiar with, oh, I know what a magician is. That's probably what that word means. And, or they might say, oh, mago, magician. They kind of start in a similar way. And the, the text at the bottom, yo veo un blank, has been used in other contexts and other stories. So something they're familiar with and then they start adding new vocabulary to that. Um, in addition, we have, the majority of our students are native English speakers. And so we have a chance to use some of our, kind of our thinking routines to build that bridge between English and Spanish and even some of the other languages that are represented in our classes by really delving into how do we bridge those languages? How are they similar? How are they different? At some of the, what the sixth graders are doing as well there. Um, and then finally, the third picture there shows an example of a language scaffold that students can use to start speaking and writing immediately. They use the past tense there, yo fui, uh, and then they can fill it in with pictures or initial sounds that they've learned or other vocabulary words. So right away, they're feeling the success and they're able to participate in their second language. Next slide, please. And this is truly what, to Andrew's point, the, the key feature of the Spanish language immersion program is to really to foster cultural intelligence. Um, we want our students to develop an understanding of culture that goes beyond, you know, what we might see here externally on the surface. We're preparing those students kind of delve into differing experiences and perspectives. And so they're able to relate and work effectively across these cultures. And so they're able to relate and work effectively across these cultures. Um, we've spotted historically significant events and practices from many Spanish-speaking countries. We talked about Dia de Septiembre, which is the Independence Day in Mexico. We, you see here Dia de los Muertos, the holiday traditions around the wor, world. But we also make comparisons back to what we do in the United States and what some of our customs are. So for example, for Day of the Dead, the students brought in a photo of a loved one or a pet that had passed, and they decorated a frame with all the things that that person loved or that animal loved in their lifetime. But then that led into conversations about, well, what do we do for Memorial Day? Why do we have Memorial Day? To recognize our soldiers that have passed on. Or what about the other cultures that are represented in our class? How do they recognize their ancestors and some of their special celebrations? So it's really key to kind of bring in what's happening in their lives, not just highlighting what's happening in other places, but really what, what's affecting them in their everyday-to-day life. So in the SLIP program, we're not only achieving academically and becoming proficient in two languages, but they're also developing their identities to, uh, their own cultural identities and understanding themselves with respect to others. And it's a beautiful thing to be part of and to witness and to experience with them. So thank you for your time. I will now turn it back to Sarah Raskin.
Thank you, Vicky, and we're fortunate now to get a chance to have a little sneak peek into what learning looks like in the Spanish immersion program. In a moment, we're gonna, uh, take a look at a video that will be shared with our prospective parents during upcoming informational webinars, and Shelley will speak to that, um, in a few moments, a little bit more about that. But, uh, one of the things that we're gonna see in the video is we're gonna meet two parents. These parents are members of our World Language Advisory Committee, and they have children that are exposed to languages other than English in the home. Vicky, a few moments ago, spoke to the fact that some of their students are possibly learning a third language in the program, so we will see that, um, come out in the video. Um, but this is also very unique because Vicky also shared that the majority of students in our immersion program speak English as their primary language. So thank you, John. I think we're ready. If you can go ahead and play the video.
The Spanish immersion program has had such a positive impact on the culture of Del Mar Hills. Having this program on our campus has opened up opportunities for our kindergarten teachers and our sixth-grade Spanish teacher to collaborate about strategies to support students with language acquisition and create meaningful learning experiences that will positively impact the future of our students. Our students learn about such traditions and celebrations as Dia de los Muertos and life experiences in Spanish countries around the world. It is so exciting to see our youngest and oldest students building a cultural intelligence and appreciation and respect for all people. These relevant and purposeful learning experiences will positively impact our students in the future and will open up so many opportunities to make a difference. One of the things that we look for in teaching our children a second language are real effective strategies. Before maybe we get started with strategies, I always like to start with having an integrated curriculum. I feel that children who are learning a second language need to make connections across the content areas, and so that's how we, uh, teach in our classroom. Some of the strategies through this are Guided Language Acquisition Design, or GLAD, which encompasses, uh, pictorial charts, chants, and lots of vocabulary. Through these strategies, children are exposed to rich vocabulary, pattern, sentence, and academic language.
Spanish is integrated into the curriculum, so the kids learn it while they're doing other activities and learning a lot of other strategies, so it happens very naturally. In addition, it's a very, Spanish is a very poetic language. And once you learn the, the way the letters sound, you're able to read very quickly and also, uh,
One of the things that is amazing about this program is the community that is built among the students. And they get this unique experience of coming into a classroom with a teacher that really doesn't speak their language for the most part. Every once in a while, there's students that do speak Spanish, but for the most part, they're in it together. And for the first several weeks, they have to really work together to figure out what this person is saying to them. And that brings them together and makes them this family because not only do they have to work together because they're in school, but it's an authentic collaboration of really putting together all the parts that they know. And it creates a community where they learn to rely on each other and really, um, have this experience that bonds them for a very long time.
Here at Ashley Falls, we pride ourselves in creating classrooms that are inclusive of everyone. They're safe, they're full of learning and joy. Um, and it's a great place for all of our students to be. Uh, we're especially proud of the language immersion program as, uh, we started our inaugural year. We have our kindergartners who are here, and it has been absolutely joy to watch this transformation as they joined us, knowing very little Spanish, to now being um, January, almost in February, and, um, listening to kids use Spanish or students use Spanish every single day throughout the course of the day has been remarkable. The beautiful thing about the culture of the room that we have is that, uh, many of our students, this is not just their second language, but some their third and some their fourth language that they're learning.
I like learning Spanish because I can, I wanted to learn how to count a lot in Spanish. One is uno. Two is dos. Three is tres.
The program has been a beautiful addition to our school. We're excited about watching this program grow from, um, its infancy here as just a kindergarten class, but all the way through our K, uh, K through six continuum.
I have two boys currently enrolled in a kindergarten Spanish immersion class here at Ashley Falls School. We applied for this program not just because they can learn second language, but we also wanted to provide them with a multicultural learning experience.
Thank you, John. I'm now gonna turn it over to Shelley, who will talk a little bit more about our upcoming parent information webinars and the process for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Thank you, Sarah. Well, I watched that video maybe three or four times, and it's still, I can't stop smiling when I see it. Um, I, I'm so grateful that we, we have had a board who, um, really supported and pushed for us to, um, incorporate a second language immersion program, um, in our district, and I, I think it's just, uh, that video really just demonstrates what an incredible program we were able to develop with really outstanding teachers and uh, the support of, uh, school board and our community. So looking ahead, we are, as I said, moving on and expanding our program up through first grade next year. We have parent information webinars scheduled, uh, February through March. Those will right about the middle there. They will coincide with the kindergarten information um, that goes out to all families who will be registering for our program uh, for the new school year, not just this program, but registering to participate in, in our district as, as families in our district. So they'll have all the information, um, and plenty of time to make a decision about whether or not they want to participate in our, uh, Spanish language immersion program or our, uh, English, uh, program. So those are coming up. We have our timeline established. We have flyers ready to go out electronically and hard copy. We have a press release that is ready to go out. Uh, I believe we're going to send it out tomorrow, and very excited about what the future holds. Next slide, please, John. And that concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any questions you might have.
First of all, I have to say thank you, and it is such a treat to have some of our teachers with us and have you present. Um, this program is even better than we thought it would be, both programs. And so, uh, thank you for bringing that DMUSD magic to this, uh, this really important effort to expand our kids' perspective as well as their second language learning. Um, I will open it up to any comments or questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment you all and congratulate you all. You've done a wonderful job. I mean, both your teachers, thank you for your presentations. Uh, that was, uh, absolutely outstanding. Um, it's too late for my son, for my first grader, to, I, I otherwise would have enrolled him like for this year uh, in kindergarten, but it's, uh, you know, I think Catherine has an opportunity for that. That's nice for her. Um, I still have one more, so it may come up. We'll see. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I really love the fact that you're expanding, uh, cultural understanding. Uh, the, in, in opening up different perspectives for students, that's, that's fantastic. I particularly loved, Andrew, uh, your, your slide about the dollar a day, um, exposing children to, seeing that difference, uh, how, how other people in different countries may live, and it may not, we may not be so fortunate. Um, but yeah, that, that's, it's wonderful, and I, I, I congratulate you on the job that you guys are doing. You're doing fantastic. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Do you want to speak?
Yes, I'll jump in. Okay, thank you. Um, it's such a treat to hear from you, um, teachers tonight. I love it. And the video was amazing, and, um, you know, I think, uh, you guys are doing great work. I just had a couple of questions, um, regarding specifically the, the immersion program. Um, I'm always wondering and questioning myself based off my own, um, I have a B-CLAD and my own training and experience. Um, and so I'm wondering what you guys think about um, keeping it in the target language, um, throughout the day and, um, versus, you know, when and if using, uh, you know, let's just say, English, the first language, um, is, is necessary, or should, should or should not be used, and what your opinion is of that.
Vicky, would you like to respond to that?
Sure, thank you for your question. So, I, I also have the B-CLAD and going to all sorts of trainings and reading and trying to stay abreast of what's going on, you know, the, it has changed over time, you know, we do stay in that target language to give them the most immersive experience. But research shows that tapping into their native language at appropriate times, very intentionally, is very appropriate at times. It's not switching back and forth and, and jumping here, jumping there, all over the place. It's really trying to stay true to the target language, but as I mentioned, using what they know in their language and saying, what do you notice about this? What can you tell us? What do you see about these two languages side by side? So there's a lot of work called, about the bridge and building by literacy, and so really making those intentional spaces to study language together.
Great, thank you. Um, one other question, I've just been reading about, you know, how to make a language program more effective on campus and, um, well, I, a question or comment, but, um, it, I'd like to read this from an article I read, it said, um, when one, and I think you guys are doing this, when one decides to adopt a dual-language program or immersion program, both languages should be integral, integral throughout the school, should be present throughout the school, both in the corridors, but also in the meetings and staff development, et cetera. Um, both languages should be present, and it should be obvious. Signs are in both languages, things are happening in both languages because that also gives students the idea that both languages are valuable. So I think, um, you know, you guys are doing that when you have your, the, the ofrenda, and everyone's seeing it and participating, and I'm, I'm just curious, um, what other next steps are we taking to make, um, Del Mar Hills and Ashley Falls visually, um, you know, bi-literate for, for everyone on campus?
Uh, thank you, Catherine, and both our principals are actively engaged along with our parents on our World Language Advisory Committee. And so those conversations continue to come up. So what are we doing so that both languages are, are honored and valued on the campus together? A very simple start is taking steps to ensure that we have library books in both languages, so that when students go to the library, um, that it's not just books in English, but that we do value that rich literature in the Spanish language as well. And as you mentioned, Catherine, um, the, uh, the examples in the display that was out for everybody to observe and see and participate in, um, is another example. Things will, uh, visual displays will continue to grow as we expand the program up through, uh, the grade levels. So we're excited to see what that looks like as we move on to our first grade expansion next year, as well as when we can eliminate some of the restrictions we're under due to COVID. That will also play a role in us being out and about and having that presence of that second language on the campus.
Well, thank you. It's great to hear from you guys, and I look forward to your next presentation, and keep up the great work. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much for this presentation, um, and for taking the time with us this evening. We are going to move on to the next item, which is eight-point-one Board Report Superintendent Report District Goals and Priorities. So Dr. McClure.
Sure. Good evening again, and with me tonight will also be Shelley Peterson, who we've been hearing from already, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, as well as Jenny Hutt, our Director of Student Services. So, um, on the heels of what we just heard, I do want to also just express such enthusiasm for what's going on in our World Language Program. It really is incredible. While other people aren't even open, we've got this incredible type of thing happening in development of, of our program, and it's inaugural, in, inaugural year. And all, in our board, you know, our board had a vision, and this is a shiny example, uh, vision actually coming to life and good work then being done by staff to actually make that, um, to have that be realized, all for the benefit of children and eventually children who become citizens in our society. So congratulations, everybody, on just a fantastic job um, in this first year of our World Language Program, our SLIP program, as far as, uh, the immersion program goes. We're very excited. So tonight, we're going to share, and, and we do have a presentation, and I think we're going to pull it up. There we go. Uh, we do have a few slides to share with you, and we're going to, uh, we're gonna, going to focus in on a few areas. We've got a lot of goals and priorities for the school year, and tonight we're going to focus on primarily four of those to kind of guide our conversation in what we update you on. So let's look at the next slide of what those four are. We're going to be talking about our educational programs. As you know, we've got in-person school this year in launch, so we'll briefly talk about those. We've done a lot of updates each month on that. Also, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We want to give you an update on the important work and priority that we've got, um, in this conversation as far as what we're doing in our district. Also, um, an update on the budget specific to, um, the greater, the greater, the greater nation, as well as how it impacts California and then our school district, and then as we've been doing a COVID-nineteen update. Next slide.
Thank you, Holly. So just, uh, a, a quick look at numbers. Our in-person enrollment at this point remains pretty steady with about twenty-six-hundred-plus students enrolled as of January twenty-sixth. Our launch enrollment is declining slightly. We have approximately, uh, twelve-hundred-and-fifty students enrolled as of January twenty-sixth, um, of this year. And then overall, uh, we have three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three students enrolled, and enrollment is increasing. Um, what we are seeing, a trend that, uh, students are enrolling and moving over from charter schools, moving over from private schools, as well as moving into the district. Uh, just anecdotally, several principals have, uh, mentioned how they, you know, as they're enrolling families and they connect with those families, bringing their students into our district and welcome those students. Uh, often the reason is, well, because you're one of the districts that's open, and my child needs an in-person experience. So they're actually renting, um, places within our district so their children can attend school. All right. Our next slide. As Holly mentioned, uh, you know, one of our very intentional focus areas this year is around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this objective was shared at the last meeting, um, and was developed actually last spring. spring to ensure an inclusive environment for all children and adults by collectively confronting and preventing prejudice, racism and discrimination. And we've taken some very intentional, purposeful steps to forward that work in our district because what we also know is that this is work that will quickly become part of our culture as we engage in it, but it is not work where we have it on a list and we check it off and we say now we're done. These are ongoing conversations that we will have over time and it will become and is going to be part of the fabric of DMUSD, just like so many other very intentional steps we've taken within our district. Next slide please. So what have we done thus far? Um, we've spoken a lot about No Place For Hate, uh, one of our, uh, board members, Jiwa, spoke to his participation in the, um, some of the work through the Anti-Defamation League and the anti-bias meetings. So we have No Place For Hate Committees established at every school, those committees are, committees are comprised of teachers, parents, and our students have a very, very significant voice in the work around No Place For Hate. Uh, we have lessons and activities occurring at every school and I'll share a few with you in just a moment. Teachers are creating intentional learning opportunities within our existing curriculum with beautiful examples and literature available to do so and they are able to start age-appropriate conversations with our children about diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, additionally, many PTAs have taken steps to support libraries that include books representing, um, a, a more diverse community as well as books with lessons that can be used as, um, conversation starters within our classrooms. We have parents at every school have now participated in the Anti-Defamation League Anti-Bias Meetings and those were, um, meetings where, uh, parents from across our district who are on those committees participated in those. And we have had staff members at every school on the No Place For Hate Committees have participated in these same anti-bias meetings and I think we had about seventy-five staff members, uh, participating and in those meetings last week and about thirty-five, forty parents participating in the meetings this week. Our members of leadership attended the National Equity Conference and that is a national conference, uh, that was hosted by our very own San Diego County Office of Education. And we ha, are in conversation and partnership now with our San Diego County Office of Education to further our work around diversity, equity and inclusion. We're very excited about this partnership because, um, they really are going to help facilitate conversations, help us map out very intentional steps so that this work, uh, really has legs and takes deep, deep root in our district, um, so that we will continue for years to come. Next slide please. I just wanted to show you an example of some of the work and conversation already happening in our classrooms as a result of the steps we took as early as last spring. So on the left-hand side, um, what you can see is, are some pictures of the civil rights movement and, um, this teacher very intentionally, he took some of her learning from our work with Ron Richart, used a, uh, thinking routine, step in, step out, and you can see there that there are post-its and that is where students have taken on the perspective of, um, the photograph and really asked some provocative questions about, well, what do they think is happening? Why do they think this is happening? Which really launched into, um, very deep conversations within the classroom using a, a his, a very important historical event in our country. Um, and then on the right-hand side, you can see, um, a classroom engaging and this is an activity that was, um, designed and used as part of the No Place For Hate work at a school. And this really, this group at this school really wanted to talk about, well, what is a disability? And when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion, well, how do we make somebody with differences feel safe and welcome? And, um, making sure that we're including conversations that, uh, really encompass children with, children and people with disabilities, children and, and people with, of different races or ethnic backgrounds, so that is, it is a very broad conversation that our children and, um, under the guidance of our teachers started with. So those are a couple of examples. Anecdotally, as I was walking through, um, classrooms and different schools last week and this week, I was, uh, really, really pleased to see many teachers utilizing the, our core curriculum and the literature available within our core curri, curriculum, uh, combined with some of the work that we've done with Ron Richart and Cultures of Thinking to really create a rich learning and conversational experience for our students. Um, and it was just, it was nice to see that they took the literature, they took our core curriculum as part of our Wonders Program and they took it a step further, but using that as the core. Then, next slide please.
So during the month of January, the governor does present his proposal for the, for the upcoming year and Governor Newsom did present a proposal for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year for the California State Budget. And we've highlighted some of the pieces of that budget here. As you likely recall, that the governor's budget must be adopted by the leg, the legislature before it becomes law and there will be a presentation of his revised budget in May. So this is what's been presented thus far as it would relate to items specific to our district and, um, education. So you can see here for a local control funding formula, the allocation there, which also, um, addresses a three-point-eight-four percent catch-up COLA. And when we talk about the cost of living adjustment, that really does talk about the, uh, the, it includes the cost, the cost, the COLA that was compounded by, um, a period of time where there wasn't a COLA. We also had, he also has presented, um, a proposal for money for preschool-aged children with disabilities as well as mental health incentive grant. Those are ongoing, um, he has presented as one-time payments to pay down the K-12, um, LCFF deferrals, expanded learning time and academic intervention grants, which would get at, um, some of the pieces related to lost learning time. For some children, it could be extended school day, extended school year, summer, et cetera. And then the in-person instruction grants. Next slide please. So also if we look at the picture overall, um, this is from School Services of California, it really does talk about the fundamentals in the US economy, at least in the near future, being pretty promising for continued economic growth post-COVID-19. And they really have addressed four main areas when they talk about, um, what, what is, what are indicators of that, one being employment with four-point-one million more on the payroll as far as jobs in December than there were in April. Housing, when we talk about what, how is that an indicator? Single-family permits, permits have increased by eight-point-five percent over the prior year and housing starts have exceeded the market expectations, reaching one-point-five million units in November of two thousand twenty, um, and that is a twelve-point-eight percent, twelve-point-eight percent above two thousand nineteen. Another indicator is the stock market, it has set new all-time highs and consumer spending remains positive, meaning with personal consumption expenditures being flat in October and November, but, um, one-point-one percent greater than last year. So, um, this is where we look at the overall economics and then obviously how that relates to California. So the next, um, slide please, talks a little bit about our governor and what the expectation is. There really is messaging coming out of the governor's office and you can probably put a lot of the pieces together and how do we get schools back to normal for the next school year? And with that as the goal and the expectation, there's a lot, a lot going on, um, in Sacramento and a lot going on in what our governor is thinking about. And this is what he's recently said as a father, "For I know firsthand what parents, educators and pediatricians continue to say. In-person is the best setting to meet not only the learning needs, but the mental health and social, emotional needs of our kids." So that being, um, a focus in our area and of course, um, the state budget is, um, is in large part, um, responsible for educating our children, um, in what we can, what we know as the public education setting. Next slide please.
Thank you, I will take this one, Dr. McClurg. So since we met last month, the, um, governor has lifted the regional stay-at-home order, which means that San Diego County continues to be in the purple tier and this really has no impact on Delmar School District because the schools, districts that were already open are, um, able to remain open and so it has no impact on us. Um, the other big piece of news that we're all very excited about is the availability of the vaccine. And as Dr. McClurg mentioned earlier, we did have a presentation, a webinar, um, with Dr. Thea Lali-Povin from the Health and Human Services Agency of San Diego. And Dr. Thea Lali-Povin works very closely with Dr. Wooton and, um, is a consultant with our local county public health department. So he provided a webinar to our staff and really reviewed the safety and effectiveness of the vaccine, was very informative and it is available on our website, so it is, um, a recording of that webinar is available to our staff and also to our families and communities for anybody who'd like to see it. Uh, he talked about San Diego's tiered rollout and the plan, our county plan for distribution of the vaccine. And currently we are in Phase One A and the good news for us is that the education and childcare sectors are Phase One B. So we are on deck, so to speak, to receive the vaccines, um, next. And so that's very exciting news for our community and also for our, um, staff. Next slide. Okay, so the California Department of Public Health has released a document that provides evidence, a summary of evidence for some epidemiological studies that have taken place across the globe, um, specifically with information on K-six schools and reopening. And they, they, by looking at these different studies, they really focused on the frequency of cases, the severity of the disease, um, the viral load with students and also the transmission, so the transmission within schools and then case rates. And what they found is that children seem to get COVID-19 less frequently than adults. Children who do contract COVID-19 most often get it from a household contact. And the transmission among students or from students is uncommon. So they found that, looking at all of these different global studies, that the transit, transmission between children, so from child to child is point-three percent and the transmission from child to adult was one percent and adult to child was one-point-five percent. They found that the greatest risk of transmission was from adult to adult and that transmission rate was about four percent. And in the, this, um, document, they do talk quite a bit about, um, transmissions resulting not from the school setting, but from community settings and from social gatherings, parties and playdates. And some of that is because they found that people are, um, their guards are down, so they may not be wearing their masks when they're at a party or a wedding or a, on a playdate, um, or they may not be distancing. So again, the, um, this summary of evidence document states that our best tools in our toolboxes are these core mitigation strategies and they are critical to reduce the transmission of COVID-19 in our schools and that's the masking, distancing, handwashing, um, that we're all doing so well in our district. Next slide. Okay, and this actually was just released this week, this is, um, uh, slide represents a study conducted by the CDC and their implication is that with masking requirements and cohorting, the transmission risk within schools appears low, suggesting that schools can safely open with appropriate mitigation efforts in place. And this language is, um, like Dr. McClurg just mentioned, the CDC is really communicating this now that there is enough evidence. We've, we've been in this situation for a year now and we have, um, models that we're able to look at and we're able to collect data and see exactly what is happening within our schools and that our schools are a safe place for learning and for students. And this is based on data that was gathered, looking at, um, this particular study was a K-12 district in rural Wisconsin and what they were looking at is, this was a very, um, high, a, a community that had a high number of outbreaks, so they were comparing, is the number of, the number of cases, the, um, the case rate in the district consistent with this high rate that was happening within the community? And what they found was that with masking and distancing and stable cohorts, there was very, very little transmission within the schools, um, that were following these. And again, this is a K-12, not a K-six district, so, um, it, it is a, an interesting study and you can find, um, the details of it on the CDC website. Next slide. So again, we're open and it's working, so, um, based on what we're hearing from public health, based on the study from, um, the CDC, we're really, um, that, we're really hearing the language and the, the communication, um, that we need to be planning for schools to be open for next year, we really want to look at how our, we can have our students returning to school. And again, we know that we're open, we're doing it and it's working and so we continue, even that we were prepared for a higher, um, number possibly of cases after the holidays and the expected surge, um, even so, we continue to have had no outbreaks, so we have not had any school transmission, no transmission between students, no transmission from students to adults or between adults on, in our school district, um, from our in-person, um, community. And how are we doing it? We continue to implement our safe reopening plan, we're continuing to follow our established protocols for isolation and quarantining, we're communicating and being transparent with staff and families about cases and exposures. And again, our teachers are preparing and our students are preparing, um, to transition from, to and from re, remote learning as needed. So what we're, we're seeing in the, in the media and in the national language now about, um, the research and the data is absolutely reflected in what we're seeing in our district in our kind of study of one, um, we have been able to recreate that same outcome with no school transmissions and very little, um, very low case numbers. Next slide. And then as a reminder, we are continuing with our parent speaker series, so our next event will be March fourth and that is a screening of the indie film Angst and it is a documentary that raises awareness about students and children and anxiety. And then we will have another event April twenty-seventh, Keeping Students Safe Online and that will be presented by our county district attorney's office. Next slide. Thank you.
So as you can see, uh, we all are very clear about what we need to do to educate our children, um, during a pandemic, both in-person and providing our quality distance learning launch program. And also, um, it showcases a little bit of how we continue to move forward with our thinking and our commitment to an extraordinary school experience for every child. So just as we were able to think ahead and be prepared to open our schools with questions about how to do it and how do we make decisions together, we are thinking about, um, a, a, a life in our district post-COVID and that actually is alive and well every day in our school district because we can see the, the excellence continue with, and I will tell you, this is an incredibly talented team, every teacher, every staff member, every part of our leadership team, um, our board, very, very talented, that's how this is happening for children every- That's how this is happening for children every day. And we appreciate our partnership with our parents in helping us make decisions. And of course, first and foremost, keeping our children at the heart of every decision, every step we make. And it is so exciting to tonight, hear about the world language program and to hear about what we're doing with diversity, equity and inclusion and our wonderful educational programs. And I will tell you, when you, when you go firsthand into classrooms, like I have the absolute pleasure of doing, you can see firsthand the benefits of school for children. It cannot be overstated how much children need to be in school, have school and have options that work for them and their family. I've been able to see our in-person classes this week as well as launch classes. And to see actual meaningful learning happening that is really about learning and about thinking. It's just amazing where we're supporting kids in agency and voice and keeping the focus on what their thing, thinking is. And, and that strong academic core and quality instruction is apparent wherever you go. It just speaks to the excellence in this district, the outstanding people, our commitment to ongoing professional learning, even in the midst of a pandemic and our commitment to doing what's best for children. So a huge compliment to everybody involved. And we're excited about seeing our way through this pandemic and supporting our, our staff in doing what we need to do to get through this school year. Support the vaccination process and also excited about a world that is post-COVID. And again, thank you to our board for supporting us in our decision-making along the way and our entire community and being a part of our collective decision-making and process. We're excited about the year and, and everybody has good reason to be very, very proud.
Well, thanks to all of you. You covered a lot of ground. What questions or comments do board members have?
I had a quick question about the governor's proposal for extended learning opportunities. Would that apply to specifically students who have been engaged throughout this past year in the distance learning? And if so, how would that affect or, or help the launch students?
It would, it would, as, as it's been proposed, it would impact children throughout the school district. So it's not, not necessarily specific only to, you know, specific kids or programs. So yes, to answer, it'll be interesting to see what happens between now and, and May. And then when there actually is an adopted budget.
Are we looking at, into anything for, um, I mean, I just, I don't know, but I think that maybe for launch, if, if there's more, we can't gauge learning loss yet at this point, but if there are opportunities that, that the, you know, state budget is providing, then I would love to hear what those are for, specifically for our launch learners.
Yeah, we, we definitely will continue to provide updates and, you know, I, I, I do have to say that the, the love, I just had a chance to talk to one of our teachers who's a launch teacher just yesterday. And to, to hear that teacher talk about what his children are learning and to actually see those children experiencing. I, it's such an example of, of children, I, I don't even see loss, you know, in my eyes. So I'll be interested as we get feedback from our teachers and input about which children would benefit and what kinds of things would we, would we put in place to actually help any children who need that help from that extra support. It will be, it will be interesting to see what the options are and what seem to be the best decisions moving forward.
I, I think Holly, it's also important to note that we have very engaged parents who are acting as learning coaches for our children in our launch program. And I think that our families had the opportunity to make a conscious choice about which program would work best for them. So when we look at mitigating learning loss, we'll look at all of the children, both in launch as well as in person, student by student, as we always say, every number has a name and a face. And ensure that we put any additional funds to good use where there is need, whether it be for launch children or for our in-person children.
That's great to hear. Thank you very much for those answers.
Just while we're on the budget topic, could you just clarify for all the different points that you showed on that slide? Are all of those relevant to us as a basic aid district or are some of them not going to benefit us?
Um, and yes, some of them benefit us more, obviously if it's more specific to LCFF. That ongoing increase and related to the 3.84% catch-up cola, that would not be, except for one small portion, for the most part, would not be applicable to a community-funded district. Some of the others we're talking about, the expanded learning time and academic intervention that Catherine was just talking about would be specific to our school district. But that, that LCFF piece is, is not specific to community-funded. And if Kathy, if Kathy has more, we can call her in if she has more to add to my answer there, but.
Right. And then I think, I'm not sure what our next budget report is, but maybe during that, we could do a little bit of a deeper dive into understanding what the state and even if there's any federal funding may be for, for our district specifically. It just to understand how we're affected.
Sure, absolutely. We definitely can. And we should have more information by that time too. We've just been, you know, just the previously proposed budget's been released and we should get more information as we move forward. These are the highlights as of now. We definitely will do that.
Kyle?
Yeah. Is there any, with the Department of Health, is there any guidelines as to when they believe that they might move into phase one B for vaccinations? I know they're sitting both county and state are sitting on about half of their vaccines right now. I guess they're not being able to jab people fast enough, but there's a lot of vaccines sitting on the shelves still. But any, any word on when they might be moving to that next phase?
Um, my latest report was within the next few weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Hi. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for everything. That sounds like things are going well. I had a couple of questions on the diversity issues, the diversity, equity, inclusion issues. I think before we had mentioned that there would be anti-bias training. Is that what was the, the no place for hate, the, the ADL? Was that what we were referring to?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I thought it was great. I thought it was, you know, that the presenters were really good and, and they helped moderate the discussion really well. I would love to see that be something that staff and teachers, I know they said they, they took part. I would love to see that being something that was included in their training, like whether it's, I don't know what they, if it's not already. It'd be great to be something that, that was added to that. The other thing I was just gonna ask was, is there a possibility to maybe, I, I would love to see more, more families be able to be a part of this. It was, the training that we had was this week, it was during the afternoon sessions. It was like a, uh, two thirty to four and I'm assuming a lot of parents were working and, uh, you know, working or have other obligations. And I'm not sure if maybe an evening session may, may, may help with that. So maybe in the future, if it's something like a, kind of like a parent speaker series, those type of issues, those type of things. If it was, uh, the opportunity was there for, for people to attend, I think there may be, an evening may be some more, more turnout and that'd be great.
Yes, we, we agree. And that is part of the planning that we're engaging with, with San Diego County Office of Ed as we move forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. If there are no more comments, we'll move on to the next item. There is a lot going on. Thank you for pushing forward on all fronts. COVID aside, there is so much great work happening in our district and really appreciate how you're navigating all of it. We are at item nine point one, which is the board report and facilities update.
Okay, good evening, uh, governing board president, Halpern, members of the board and Dr. McClurg. Tonight we'll do our monthly facilities update. Uh, next slide, please John. And we'll cover our two main projects tonight, the Delmar Heights School rebuild and Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine. Next slide. So we'll start with Delmar Heights School rebuild. Next slide, please John. And with the rebuild, we will, I'll give an update on the litigation, on the lawsuit. We did have a hearing on December 22nd, so a hearing since our last meeting. I'll give an update on the coastal development permit. And we've cut this up here, the DSA approval, because that's the other main portion necessary for us to move forward with construction. Next slide. So starting with the litigation, as I shared, we had our hearing on December 22nd. And that hearing did lead to a, a, a decision and a tentative ruling that are posted on our website. And that decision tentative ruling that was then made the ruling really only found three areas in which the school district needed to further study. At the time, the, the judge also stated that the litigants, Save the Field and Procopio and, and our attorneys needed to come back to, to work together and look at creating a writ, uh, which, and a judgment which would enact the, the ruling and then, and then resubmit those back to the court. So I, our attorney and the attorneys for Procopio have gone back and forth with some items, haven't had come to agreement. And we are, are planning to submit those writs by the end of this week. We do anticipate that a decision from the court, uh, they will issue a judgment after reviewing would have been filed in fairly quick manner. So potentially the week after, but, but fairly quickly after. And we'll be able to then update the board as to how the court ruled. The court will given, looking at the writ that Save the Field, Procopio on the path to Save the Field has submitted as well as ours and be coming up with a writ and a judgment that the, the court then issues. Uh, I will say, we believe that this should look like us doing the further investigation of that and in the areas the court has identified. Again, there were only three areas. At our special board meeting this month, the board took action to remove the, uh, the ramp and stairs to the Miramontana cul-de-sac, which really only leaves two areas of study that don't actually impact the operation of the school in any way. Those being the construction noise and whether there's any biological impacts when the outfalls that need to be repaired. Those are studies that we could do and, and we don't believe that there's any reason after the court has found that other areas such as the size of the field and the wildfire danger were, were areas that needed to be further studied. But the litigants want the district to do and prepare a full EIR, reanalyze everything all over again and provide new alternatives for the design of the heightened campus. I, I will say our legal counsel has tried to have the litigants agree to look at any, at only the issues that the courts identified, but they will not agree to this limit. So we know that two different writs will go in. Um, and we believe that it should come out with us just doing the further study identified in that original ruling. And again, we will update the board as we learn more about this. Next slide, please John. So the other major item here is our coastal development permit. And as we know, the lawsuit filed by Procopio on behalf of Save the Field and the letters subsequently sent to the city staff did lead to some subsequent delay in this project, uh, this process for the project. As I've shared with the board, we've resubmitted cycles a, a few times. We have our current cycle review ending on Friday. Almost all of the items have been checked off in the plan review. And so the current plan review is almost complete. For the city, the permit will not be issued until a new district sequel document is approved though. So depending on the results of the writ that we just spoke about and how we need to carry that out, there will be some updates to our sequel documentation. And that will be necessary to get us to the end of the coastal development process and the coastal development permit. And as I've shared in the past, we do need that coastal development permit to be able to break ground as well. So as we learn more again about that writ and the next steps, we will know about the, we'll be able to update the board on timing with the sequel process and be able to share some updates on when we could see that coming to resolution as well. Next slide, please. And then finally reopening, uh, so as we have shared, the lawsuit has delayed reopening. And, but I also have to share, it is a top priority to bring students back to a rebuilt campus as soon as possible. And so that's why we're working diligently to work with the city on the coastal development permit process that we can move that through. We've been working with our legal counsel and our team to come to resolution on the final writs that we can move forward with. The next steps on this sequel process. And I will note that the rebuild is really designed for academic excellence and student safety. And that was borne out in the, uh, the decision and the ruling from, from the judge. With that, next slide, please. So I'll also give an update on Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine. Next slide, John. And first we'll look at the coastal development permit with Pacific Islands Ranch. And as you remember, we have a small portion in the south end of the campus. We initially submitted our permit application in July of 2020. Our first cycle was five weeks late, our second cycle was four weeks late. We have been in a, a lot of contact with city staff over the last little bit as we've seen these delays. And we have resubmitted, uh, we have actually had a call last week and we'll have another call this week with staff. This is master planned and it is clearly planned to have a school in this area. And so we're hopeful that this cycle review will be the last and we will be done so we can move forward and, um, and get started with the work on it. And we're really working to ensure the delays we experienced don't impact the timeline. But I, and I will say, we've, um, we've had good conversations, but we're going to continue to press on that because it's very important that we get through this cycle review. And it's a little disappointing, the couple of delays we've had, especially with this fact that we are looking at a, a project that has been in the master plan for that area of the community for 20 years. We do still see construction starting in the spring and anticipate opening in August of 2022. But those are some of the pieces we are, we are working through. And we will continue to work diligently and pushing forward with the city staff to make sure that gets through. Next slide, please. A little update as well on the city park that is adjacent. The city's parks and rec staff and park planning, uh, planning department, excuse me, have had a series of three meetings with the community. We've been able to attend some of them. We've also had conversations in between. And we have a, uh, an image here of the design that has been decided upon. If you look at it, you can tell there's a, a ball field in the middle, there'll be a, a backstop for baseball. There's also space for a soccer field there. In the northwest, there is play structures and there'll be some covered area. There will be a, uh, a, how do they call it? A comfort station, restrooms basically. Near the Solterra Vista, there's also parking. So they're going to have parking on the northeast there. You can see the kind of gray area. They're also going to be adding some parking on Solterra Vista, street parking, which may actually work well with our design. And then down at the south, there are two tennis courts, a couple of pickleball courts and a basketball court. And that's where we will also have access, an access point to our site. We're having ongoing collaboration with their staff as they work towards opening in late 2023. Conversations about kind of expanding and connecting on that access point as well as the pedestrian traffic, traffic calming, et cetera, that will go with potential crosswalks at Cielo, Cielo Ranch, as well as the need for likely some stop signs and crosswalks at Solterra Vista and Toronto Court. So I've had some good conversations with their planning department. And we're working on setting up some conversations with the traffic folks so that we can look at this kind of as a whole, instead of looking at its two separate pieces, because it is, when completed, sort of one bigger area that will be a part of that community. And then finally, we will see some small work that we've gotten okayed by the city coming up here pretty soon. SDG and E, we have our permits to, uh, to do, install our transformer, transformer. We found as Erickson Hall, our contractor went out and did some surveying that they, SDG had actually put, put it in where our driveway's supposed to be. So now we're working, we thought we'd be starting it this week, but SDG needed to move their initial install over a little bit. Not a big deal, but something that we're working through, it'll, um, uh, get taken care of fairly quickly. But we will have a little bit of work going on there fairly soon. Once we get SDG and E to move it over, we'll be installing our transformer and our pad there. And that will allow us to run a temporary power when we actually start the construction off of our initial permanent power and then run the permanent power to the buildings from there. So exciting to see even a small piece of groundbreaking. And then as we get that coastal permit, we'll get the full groundbreaking and be and be able to have a little ceremony and get things moving with um, Pacific Islands Ranch. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions uh, the board may have.
Any questions? Okay. That brings us to a thank you, Chris, for the presentation and all the diligent work trying to, to make all of that happen, obviously, to big construction projects. And a district of our size is a pretty impressive undertaking. So we appreciate all of your work on that.
My pleasure.
Okay, um, we are at the closing items. 12.1 is board review reminder of upcoming DMUSD events. You'll see that in your agenda. 12.2 is board review reminder of upcoming district DMSCF and PTA events. 12.3 is preliminary items regarding uh, for the February board meeting. Does anybody have any items to suggest? Okay, and that uh, brings us to the adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll a poll vote. Member one in.
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
An aye for me. The meeting is adjourned at 7:55 PM. Have a good evening.